Austin Cool.
Yeah.
White flag, white flag in United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Call, Austin Cool here. Approval of meeting minutes from June 5th. Uh, Austin Cool make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 5th, 2025.
House Speaker, second.
I have a motion from Austin Cool and a second from Tony House like to approve the meeting minutes from June 5th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same, motion carries. Citizen input and public comment.
Okay. Hi, Chad isn't going to be here.
Chad's right there.
Oh, okay.
I can come sit up.
Well, I then communicated with Chad about the flower boxes on the two bridges. And first of all, I'd like to know why the bridges on the east side are discoloring in black spots and on the west side they're much longer, but they're pure white.
I guess I don't have an answer for that question other than age. The br- the bridge downtown here is thirty-three years old.
Is what?
Is probably approximately thirty-three years old. The age of the structure is what I'm telling you is probably the reason he might.
Can you spray it with anything?
I guess I'll have to take a look at what you're referring to.
Is it our responsibility to clean the bridges though? Is that the DOT?
It's DOT's bridge.
Yeah, we have to let them know.
Yeah, I don't even know what you're referring to, so I can't answer your question from right here.
Were the two bridges done by the same company?
No, I don't remember.
Zenith Tech did this one. I'm pretty sure Zenith Tech did the other ones and the third bridge was somebody else.
Well, you might check with them to see if that's common deterioration or become exhausted, because it looks crummy. It looks, it looks dirty. So anyway.
Could mean it has a shade.
Um, I think I communicated to Chad and with mayor about supporting flower boxes on the both side, east and west bridges. And I also sent the mayor ask if I should apply to DOT for permission on the radiations. And I didn't. And had nice communication and they asked what my purpose was and so on and so forth. And they also, if you looked at all the material I sent dropped off, they had, I think, eight other people on their committee to look at the plans. And they had questions about the flower boxes, why I wanted it. And I said, I thought from a study I read, I think it was the second study comprehensive plan, it said the east approach to Waterloo looks rather, they didn't say messy, but they said it needs some improvement for welcoming people to Waterloo. So that's always been in the back of my head. So I thought, and then when St. Paul's Lutheran Church put their illuminated changing sign up, I thought that was a nice addition to tell people they're active and welcome, et cetera. So I suggested the flower boxes and they ask why again. And then I referred to as I sent to the committee. Page. And they were here, I think circa nineteen forty, something like that. And they, if you look closely at it, they were standing on little benches to water it. And there were two groups, newcomers group and homemakers group that took care of it and watering it. And consequently, in conversation with Tim Thomas, my representative from my district, he said, and then others have told me too, they were vandalized and knocked over. And DOT also checked that. What were we going to do to stabilize them so nothing would happen? And I said, I would be sure to do research on securing them. And so anyway, they okayed it. And actually, they thought it was a great idea. And so then I brought it to the attention of the mayor and Chad. And they had some questions. And their questions were a picture of the flower box. And I said, we were just in the process of looking at some, and we still are, but Wayne and Kraut Day is coming up. So I thought pretty involved in that. So I didn't have any answer for that, but I said, they wanted the measurement, as Chad knows, of the top of the railing. And Chad went and measured it and it's twelve inches. And that's answered. And I also said, the dimension of the boxes, I haven't gotten to that yet, because I think I will need from both of us working together, a shorter flower box in the east side, because that's a shorter bridge top. And the longer bridge is on the west side is much longer. So it wouldn't have to be centered appropriately, et cetera. So we haven't gotten to that yet. Plant care, I said, I contacted Lee Columbus that I work carefully with, with the open board at the carousel. And he's with the Waterloo Business Association. And he said he'd be willing to help. And I also contacted Mary Lynn Schaefer that has mentioned this before too. So right now, I have looked at several window boxes. Some are cut underneath for security, but that has to be checked out more thoroughly. So I am said to Mary, Mary Lynn and Lee Columbus that I think I would like to put this on hold right now, because I don't have the time and Mary Lynn doesn't have the time either to research that box, whether it be metal, which I think it should be or not. We can get, there are several of these companies that I looked at that do have a representative of their item to talk to. And I think when it comes to that point, we will get an expert's advice on metal or something prefab or whatever, and how it is attached. One of the people, organizations said, an attachment would have to be drilled through the cement, through the, that would, yeah. Box and through the cement and be secured, clamped underneath securely, so it could not be tipped over.
Is the DOT okay with us, you guys drilling through their railings to secure boxes?
What?
Is the DOT okay with drilling through their railings on their bridges to secure boxes to their railings?
Uh, I didn't get to that point.
Okay.
But that was suggested in one of the boxes. Now, I'm wondering if any of you, I noticed when I was going to the meeting at Waterloo Utilities, that, and I think that's where Mohanson went, the metal, some metal, it says metal makings, something. Do any of you know anything about a business that does something with metal down in the industrial center?
It said Metal Works.
Yeah. Larry Waldo owns Metal Works Customs Fabricating down in Industrial Park.
Okay.
It's custom.
Next to utilities.
Might be, might be something to look into that might work.
Yeah, so.
So I'm open for communication. I think two words that I have found, and I think Mary Lynn, in our past fundraising, we have to work together. And that's why I followed up with DOT, that they're okay. And now I'm communicating to you and your opinions, you like or dislike. And, and I think, you know, Ed O'Onne wanted to get the kids involved. There are talented young people in that high school. I've met some. And I do want to encourage some young people to join us when we get to another planning session. So, Mary Lynn, you have?
Max, um, I can't remember his last name, teaches tech at up at the high school. He would be a good, he'll be a good resource. And we could possibly get the kids involved. Once you get the kids involved, then it really helps with non-destructive problems, because it's their project. And they take pride in that and own it. And I think that might be a way of.
So Max Chopen is?
Max Chopen, yeah, that's the one.
So you want them to design the box?
Well, it could. And we would might, we might just talk to them and see.
Because they have CNC machines.
Oh, yeah. And they've got that, that, the machine and the whole business. So, and that might be our best route to go.
Okay, we, we need to, we need to keep this moving. We exceeded our, our three minutes by about twelve.
Yeah. Do you want to do that, Chopen?
Well, we'll, we'll set, you know, we'll talk about it. But there's some other things that have to maybe be for that. But we'll talk to him.
He's a good guy.
Keep, keep the research going. Obviously, we're going, going into the fall, so nothing's going to be planned for this year. So we got six, eight months, so we get time.
Can I ask one question? Um, Browns, are you pursue, pre, um, is that highway, the east highway going out of town being taken up yet this fall?
The meeting was.
On East Madison?
What do you mean by taken up?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight.
They have, just recently.
I thought.
Why are our pictures down?
They fell off.
Nobody seemed to know when I've asked. And they all thought it was starting.
No, no.
And I shouldn't know. I don't think so.
There was an informative meeting, but not, not a start.
Okay. Okay. We'll come back and, and let you know what we find and, yeah.
Okay, moving on, project oversights and updates.
All right, well, I'll start off with Hendrick Street, because you can see what's going on there. They've been working for roughly a month and a half on Hendrick Street. They started with the sewer and water. Currently, they are all the way from the north end to the south end with sewer and water. Next week, they're gonna start with storm. Week after that, possibly around twenty-second, tie in to the state heavy. There will be a detour on our residential streets to get around Hendrick Street. They, we taking Central Avenue, Pierce Street, back to Adams to just go around that section while they're doing their tie-ins. Give me a inconvenience for.
What's, what's some of the signs that were like laying on the ground right now? Is that to do with that?
That's a whole different project that we had known nothing about. It says it's a D.
There's all the signs laying there. What happened?
It says it's a detour for Highway TT North.
Okay, that has nothing to do with the city?
No, genie received some calls today. The only thing we know about it is what the signs say. Just a detour for a, a different, a different project that we have no idea about. Anyways, to finish the Hendrick Street, once they're doing their tie-ins on East Madison Street, they're hoping to have the tie-ins done in a couple of days, depending weather, probably most likely be a week. So there'll be heavy truck traffic, all nineteen eighty-nine traffic on residential streets. I could not get the DOT to let me use Clarkson. They didn't give me a reason. I don't know. They came back at, told me rude Pierce Adams. They said, there's no way that somebody's gonna make that turn. There's not a chance, especially if two of them meet. So I said, Central, it's wider. Both Pierce is wider and Adams Street is wider. So that's real good. So hopefully, it's only a week. Um, Long Street.
Email from Mitch.
Email from Mitch. I don't know if you guys want me to read.
Well, just the highlights.
Interactions, conversations with Cartechner Brothers LLC about the Indian Hills Millamore Ride project and the Long Street, Henry Street connectivity sidewalk projects. Mitch sent a couple bold letters reminding them that the substantial completion date is September nineteenth, which we all know is coming up real fast. Their response was they're gonna mobilize equipment next week for the sidewalk project installation, get going on that, and then start on Indian Hills project Wednesday. That being said, hopefully they show up. Um, there's some things that we can penalize them if they don't get done. I, to be honest with you, I don't want to work with them again. This is three times.
I was gonna say, this is the one that you were nervous about to begin with. This was a subcontractor from the bidder.
Yes.
That won the job. And they're subcontractor.
It was, it was tied up with Hendrick Street. So Dorner's Incorporated got Hendrick Street. Cartechner was their sub. Cartechner ended up being the general on Indian Hills and Long Street. So it made it kind of sticky. I, if it wasn't that way, I, I would have recommended throwing out Carte- Cartechner bid for the Indian Hills project. But being tied with the Hendrick Street project, I.
Does Dorner have any pull to get, like light fire on their?
He's, Dorner, Dorner is a month and a half out. So he has no, no incentive to bring him here. So I, yeah, I hope Cartechner pulls through. If they don't, there's some finding and stuff we can do. And moving forward, I do not recommend going with Cartechner.
Did you initiate this four days, minutes ago? Uh, why is nothing happening?
Okay, I'll back up. Earlier conversation this week, I received a phone call at home Tuesday night from Lowerzor Excavating. He stated that he was called about doing the excavating for Long and Henry Street sidewalks. I'm like, okay, well, I'll entertain you. Tomorrow morning, meet me at eight o'clock, I'll show you the project. So then I called Mitch. I'm like, Cartechner's subbing out with a different sub that we don't have. I mean, I trust Lowerzor Excavating to do the job, but he wasn't approved sub on the contract. So Mitch, Mitch, Mitch tried calling this morning. He texted me. So that's what this email, why this email went on. So, yeah, so.
So Cartechner contacted Lowerzor to do the excavating?
Actually, I guess how it really shook down is Cartechner asked Renok to do the excavating. And then Renok asked Lowerzor to do the excavating. Yeah, so it's kind of turned into that.
So who's actually doing the excavating?
I'm assuming from this email today, we're supposed to, I'm gonna check emails tomorrow.
Okay.
Cartechner is supposed to send over documents with the sub lists and documentation.
Okay.
That was supposed to be, I think, today or tomorrow, he said. But I will read emails tomorrow.
And the last one I got was at eleven thirty.
Yeah, that was the last one I got too. So that is that for project oversight and updates.
Hey Chad, for the bypass of Hendrick Street, is there any way you could run them out, TNI?
No, DOT wouldn't let me. I had success with TNI and I suggested Clarkson. And they told us it was a rural, or a municipal road closure. So we had to.
That's gonna be a little question.
I don't disagree with you. I just, when they came back with me with the rude Pierce Adams, I said, that absolutely will not work. I figured with Central, you know, because they're coming westbound, at least they can make it a dive straight in. When DOT says some, you can try to reason with them, but that were my first two suggestions, TNI eighty-nine or Clarkson eighty-nine. They said no.
Only a couple of days.
Yep.
Yep.
No unfinished business, new business. Ordnance twenty twenty-five dash zero two, three fifty dash zero seven, parking restrictions. Assuming we're going to, these are for the spots behind the city hall or wall?
Yeah, this, these were the spots behind city hall. Like, we put an ordinance form of some understanding, right? And I've never finished it. So this is just formality that left to take up here and then the next one for me. Already, already have been talked about, but I guess probably a motion and a.
A motion, we'll need a motion for that. And a second.
Austin Cool, make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero two, uh, three fifty dash zero seven parking restrictions.
How's my make a motion a second?
So I have a motion in a second to forward ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero two to common council for approval. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Future agenda items and analysis.
I don't have enough in other than I did look at the calendar today and facility.
Two words again, about what's on this month.
Yeah, it's gonna get cold soon.
That's all I got.
Then we'll have to pay for eventually come up, but it come here.
Yeah, that'll probably be October.
How's my make a motion to adjourn?
Austin Cool, second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I feel like you get watered, you know.
And we cannot do that anytime. He said most likely it'll be at twenty-second. Twenty-second. So what's this? I see it's not far as... It's not... It's not... It's not...
I actually, I don't know.
I need to go to my office. Look at...
Bye, you're late. Here's the... It's... I see. No, I, I didn't want to. It's... 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 Yes, well, it's... Yeah. It's... 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 Yeah, it's, yeah. It's somewhere.
Red. Must be so, must be so positive in your business. Yeah. That's true. Because that would be getting a red, so it needs a paper outside of the budget.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I can imagine that.
Right. But it's an outside of budget.
And a bridge, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know how families, young families do with these things. My boys are young and all they think they're...
Better for the garden, work?
What was that?
Better for the garden, work?
Yeah, right. No, I haven't had time to have one this year, so... Maybe next year.
We took some kids on and cruised up Alaska.
Oh, yeah.
Put on their piece of pizza, tomorrow later, sit down for a formal dinner. Tomorrow later, you get another week's work.
Didn't face him at all.
Are we getting ready for 30 minutes?
Yeah, thank you.
Stop talking. I couldn't cut her off, I'm like...
Hey, witch. We're just the brothers' family. And then, witch is... And then we're good playing for everything. That's not here.
Well, I know.
That's at the school. I remember.
Ooh, my. You got the memo.
You got the memo.
Oh, save with Jody.
Yeah. I noticed that when you walked in.
I know, that's what I thought when I saw her.
I mean, no, you guys didn't get our memo.
We are totally outnumbered.
We're the blue screen.
We, we win, you lose. I'm vice.
I just couldn't tell.
And I'm not...
Just coughed. Have her last name? Oh, God, do we. We should have adjourned this meeting twice. I agree.
Man, oh, what am I saying?
Wasn't always... That's okay.
We'll see if we get you next to me anymore, okay?
Right.
We were talking about two percent, stuff like that, too.
But you can, you can, so, you know.
I can tell you're delivering five thirty.
Somebody else cooking.
Which I do, yeah.
Almond trees.
I think they just kind of...
It is. Maybe you got everybody in there.
Oh, yeah, no, I read they... They did. They...
He's writing, no.
All right, good.
[Inaudible] United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cummings here.
Austin Cool here.
Griffin here.
Ware here.
Take your chances out today. Meeting minutes and approval of August twenty-first. Are there any additions or corrections?
Austin Cool, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Austin Cool, second by Cummings to approve. All in favor?